Good evening, this is Dr. Vernon Price. I'll take care of it. Stay with us. Thank you, this community and its support for this college.
Thank you. This time we'll consider any public comments, if anyone would like to speak. Gary, now, this is a special round for Trinity Valley Community College. Dr. Vernon Price was celebrated and has been with this college for 56 years. Well, plus another two is a teacher here at the college and another two is a student. He's taught a lot of students, I'm one up. But I sure, we sure thank you for all your service. I mean, I think we have some folks who want to say.
Yes, we have Dr. Plisik and Eric Trishin that want to say a few words at this time. So, Plisik? So, I already missed him. I mean, I've been here five years, Division Chair for four. When I came, I left U C Tyler, I've been there for about 13 years, best decision I ever made. Part of the reason I came here was when I looked at the website, I saw that a lot of the folks that have been here have been here a long time. And to me, that indicates a healthy, a healthy place to go. I mean, the fact that you come and you stay and between him and Jim Hillary, I don't know if anyone remembers Jim Hillary, he was our physicist that I think was here for 30. Thirty or forty years.
Doctor Vernon for fifty-three.
And then, and then I came and was biology instructor for the first year and before they made me Division Chair. And Vernon took me under his wing, takes everyone under his wing. And a lot of the faculty here are students of Vernon's. And when you bump into people at Walmart, they're students of Vernon's. And when you post something on Facebook and say, which teacher was the most memorable teacher you had at TBCC? It's Vernon. He is the face of biology. He is the face of TBCC to so many people that he's the one they remember when they were here. I think a lot of his students at this point have retired well before he is retired. And I believe when he started here, I don't even think I was a twinkle in my parents' eyes just yet. So, that really speaks to his character, his stability, his perseverance in doing what he does. And, you know, being his chair for four years, I look at the student evaluations every year and see how my folks are doing. And never, ever do I see on those evaluations someone say something bad about Vernon Price. He has always had the best evaluations, student evaluations of all my faculty. And that just speaks to the man that he is, the teacher that he is, and really a role model for all of us as a person and as an instructor at TBCC. And, you know, it was sad to see him retire, but at the same time, I'm happy for him because I know there's a lot in his life, one to try and do outside of the school that he wasn't really able to do, still working and still putting all he could into work classes. I will say, and I don't think anyone else knows this yet, but my biology faculty have decided we're going to name the lab he's always used, the Vernon Price Memorial Biology Lab. So, we'll make sure that happens in time for our Christmas celebration in 2025. So, we've come and visited, us and I hope he comes to all of our Christmas gatherings or anything else we've come to from around. But it's been a true honor to me, thirty-five years is younger than him, for me to be his boss for this, the short amount of time that he's actually been here. And we all miss him and we all love him. And it's been an experience knowing him for sure. So, thank you. And soon as I saw him, I needed a hug. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
On behalf of Trinity Valley College and Board of Trustees, we have a flag, we'd like to present you with a statement.
See that, it's a horse.
And I left something with all of you that I've been using for many years. So, if you get on Facebook, TBCC Facebook, Vernon Price, you'll see the comments that you've made of how much value this has been on learning how to study and be successful. So, if you've got grandkids that need it, well, you've got them.
This time. This time, we're going to consider and discuss making TBCC a Purple Heart College. Dr. Morrison?
Tonight, we have Dan Tate, Lisa Holmes, and Eric Walter with us. I think Dan would like to say a few words about this recognition.
And Dan is a true advocate to veterans and advocacy.
Thank you, Trinity Valley Community College Executive Board and Directors, Dr. Jason Morrison. Special thanks to TBCC Veteran School Certified Officer, Pat Trishin. As a representative of Caring for America, I'm honored to be here to discuss the Purple Heart. Caring for America objective is to support our veterans and our veterans with financial support, moral support. As far as the Purple Heart, it started with my uncle, W. D. Payne. He served in the United States Army in World War II. He was part of the European Campaign. During his time of service, he was promoted to receive the Purple Heart. With this family history, during several road trips to Arkansas, my wife and I witnessed seeing many Purple Heart signs entering cities and seeing like all the counties. If Arkansas can do it, we'll get Purple Heart. Why not Texas? I started the process contacting the Purple Heart representatives that could offer help in getting this accomplished. That was three years ago. It seemed I would come to a dead end every time I pursued this inquiry. I didn't give up after many attempts during each year. This past year, I was successful and made contact with Lisa Holmes, who was near the city. Lisa is a Gold Star Purple Heart survivor with a passion. That is when I can say the objectives of the Purple Heart vision began for Caring for America. It started with contacting Judge Wade McKinney, making the proclamation for Henderson County, becoming a Purple Heart county. At the Caring for America Veterans Day event 2024, and I want to stop here and say, Dr. Morrison, thank you for your support. I had a special table for him up front. He wanted to go back and sit with his veterans and I'll say thank you. Along with Athens, Chandler, and Brownsburg, we revealed to the public and the veterans that all these are becoming Purple Heart counties and cities. We are now just a few cities away from a total sweep of the entire county being a Purple Heart entity. I can't speak to the military order of the Purple Heart. I can only say for Caring for America organization, we are thankful for the many veterans that made the ultimate sacrifice and the ones that escaped with battle wounds, they carry every day. I believe placing a sign that declares Purple Heart City, County, College, or Community is the least we can do to show our support. Caring for America's motto, thank God for our veterans and first responders. What would we be without them? To give you more details about the Purple Heart, I believe it would be more fitting to hear from Lisa Holmes, Gold Star Spouse with Purple Heart Recipient, and Eric Walters, Purple Heart Recipient, and the Junior Commander of Military Order of the Purple Heart. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Holmes Longwitz. I'm the surviving Gold Star spouse of Army Sergeant John Longwitz. John served in the US Army, was an infantryman, and was wounded. He died in 2021 of his battlefield wounds. He was 100% service disabled. For those unaware, as his spouse, I may utilize the Hazelwood Act, which provides for a benefit that provides up to 150 credit hours of tuition and fee exemptions. John was the founder of our chapter in 2013. He served two years as Military Order of the Purple Hearts Past Department Commander. And today, our chapter has 520 recipient members who span across North and East Texas. Let me step back a little bit. The history of the Purple Heart Medal, which is the oldest medal of the United States military medals bestowed on the common soldier. The first was awarded as the Badge of Military Merit by General George Washington in 1782. This award serves to recognize the outstanding valor of those who fall in battle and those who were wounded in war by the hands of our nation's enemy. The Military Order of the Purple Hearts Organization was congressionally chartered in 1958 by congressional legislation. Every Patriot member of our organization is a Purple Heart recipient. Our families and Gold Star families may join, they attend meetings and events as an associate member, right along with the Patriot members. This brings me to the rarity of ever meeting a Purple Heart recipient. In America, there was a total of 1.9 million Purple Heart medals awarded since World War I. There are 250,000 living recipients. Of those recipients, the majority of living heroes served in Vietnam, and every day, we lose another hero to the ages. Of the post-9/11 warriors, there are 48,000 living recipients. 20% of our nation's living recipients of Purple Hearts live in Texas. We have the largest geographic area of Purple Heart recipients than any other state in the nation. Why? Because we're Texas tough. Americans heroes keep their heads down, they never speak of their injuries. So, the chance of meeting one is pretty rare. Or how they got their injuries. They never say, as a civilian, you may never know, you were speaking to someone who has a Purple Heart, your neighbor could have a Purple Heart. These warfighters are very humble and feel lucky to be alive, they survived where others did not. With heavy hearts, they do not complain. Each one bearing scars and wounds that will never heal, and they know, to whom much is given, much shall be required. The Purple Heart designation of Trinity Valley Community College would be part of a general awareness program to highlight public Purple Heart recipients and sacrifice while they are living. To date, there are 17 universities and colleges from Texas on this register. When a college is designated, they are placed on a national register in Congress. It is called the Purple Heart Trail. It is a covenant between your institution and the Military Order of the Purple Heart communicating, not only to the Purple Heart recipient, but to bring healing and encouragement to all veterans of the community, students and faculty who served alongside the wounded and saw friends die in battle. It helps to lift up the military family member, and it politically states that your college is steadfast supporting of all veterans, honoring the sacrifice of America's combat wounded and the war dead, and will forever cherish these veterans and their family. On behalf of Chapter 1513 and on behalf of the Purple Heart families like mine, who have lost an American hero to wounds of war, thank you Trinity Valley Community College for your dedication to those who have served their country valiantly and with honor, and who continue to make a difference in our community in such a selfless way. I'm going to introduce you to somebody. His name is Eric Walter, and he is a Purple Heart recipient of recent conflict.
Good evening. My name is Eric Walter. I'm a Purple Heart recipient, Iraq Army veteran. I am the Junior Vice Commander for the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 1513. Trinity Valley Community College should become a Purple Heart school to formally recognize, honor, and support the sacrifices of our nation's veterans, particularly those wounded or killed in action. As an institution of higher learning, TBCC has the opportunity and responsibility to create a culture of respect and gratitude for the military community. By achieving this designation, the college would publicly demonstrate its appreciation for the service and bravery of Purple Heart recipients, many of whom pursue higher education after military service. Becoming a Purple Heart school can also strengthen TBCC's commitment to student veterans by fostering a more inclusive and supportive environment. This designation can raise awareness among faculty, staff, and students about the unique experiences and needs of combat wounded veterans, and may also encourage partnerships with veterans service organizations and attract future students who are veterans or active duty military members. Ultimately, this initiative aligns with TBCC's values of service, community, and excellence, enhancing the college mission while giving deserving recognition to our nation's heroes. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to thank Ms. Pat. She does an amazing job working with our veteran students as they started an inaugural Veterans Club on campus. She's a tremendous advocate and asset at this college and representing the veteran population. So, Board, I present to you and ask for your approval for Trinity Valley to become a Purple Heart college.
I'd like to make that motion.
If you made, seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Your veterans, come on you. Tell our veterans. Hopefully someone will be going.
Oh, thank you. We appreciate it.
Next order of business is President Ford.
I'm gonna make it quick tonight because I know we've got a long meeting here. Just a couple of things from the last meeting. I want to recognize a couple of our young ladies from the softball team. You know, last year, we had our first All-American. This year, we had two more All-Americans, Maria DeBose, here with Sweden House. Both recognized as All-Americans, and we're so proud of what they did at Trinity Valley, and both are moving on to their respective institutions in the fall. Now, I'd like to take this time, no one needs an update from Dancing for the Stars, so we're going to move right to, right to Tammy's enrollment update.
Good evening, Board. You would have gotten a copy of this earlier today, you know, sitting at your chair. You will see for, I'm gonna start off with fall, where we still have about eight weeks. Off the top of my head, that counts as a drive of registration for the fall semester. Right now, we're sitting at head count of 4,100, or 4,014 students, about 36% below. We will go, that's Fall '24's official numbers. And if you remember, we won't get our official count date till October for the fall. So, making really good traction for the fall semester. FTE is right about that same percentage. For summer, we are sitting at 2498 on head count compared to last summer's 2618. That's about four and a half percent head count below where we were last summer. We still finish registration this week for summer, for summer two. So, still will make hopefully a decrease in that gap. But I want you to pay close attention to some of the numbers on here where we're seeing a little bit of difference, particularly under the high school. We did, if you remember, we saw an increase in high school with head count and our FTE and last fall and last spring. That also, we had the FAST program where the low credit students who were eligible receive free cost of tuition and fees for their classes. So, we saw a shift in that enrollment. Those students able to take more classes during the traditional fall and spring semester. So, we're kind of equalizing out over the summer, not seeing as many enroll for the summer semester this year, which we pretty much expected, being that their enrollment increased so much over the fall and spring. And then, our other area where we are down a little bit is, or probably most significantly with the high school, is our TDCJ numbers. And if you remember this time last year, we were working on our programs, and there were some programs that we were closing in order to make sure that what we were offering or the programs that were needed down at TDCJ, really looking at the curriculum. So, that again was expected summer over summer, and that is we teach out that old curriculum and kind of get our feet wet with new enrollment, new cycles of those classes. FTE is about the same, about a little over 4.5% down for summer, just as a, to show that comparison between the head count and the FTE. Are there any questions on that?
High school kids are now taking summer off.
Do you think our enrollment will grow for the fall, until last year?
It's hard to say. Where, I mean, where we're trending, I would expect for us to. We had a pretty good jump last fall. And we always have to look at, so last fall was when our high schools had really been able to put in the work and prepare for the, for a first, after a first year of FAST, adjust their schedules, things like that. It's hard to really see until after a year or two, kind of where everything levels back out. But it's obviously the enrollment, increased enrollment in dual credit, see exactly how that impacts us in completion rates, which we saw a huge increase, one of our biggest yet, this May with graduation. And as we progress through the FAST program that we are, we are now living in every day, it'll be honestly be interesting to see how everything does level out over the next couple of years. I think that our applicant numbers have been great. The number of students that are reaching out, submitting documents, submitting their FAST application, all of those things. The numbers really look good. And now, it's, you know, up to us to make sure that we're communicating, getting them enrolled, all of those things, and then up to them to pull the trigger on actually enrolling. So, right now, just looking at where we are, do I have any concerns about fall? No, I mean, you're coming up on our busiest time of registration, kind of once we get past that summer two, the last about six, seven weeks of registration, usually our big weeks for fall. Once we get past the first couple of weekends, I think we're trending pretty well.
Okay. Just a reminder, next board news, July 28. Now, we're to the next order of business, sir.
That's a pleasure to have Dr. Randy Daniel here today to give a oath of office to trustee Perry.
Pleasure to swear in for the college and a great opportunity. But you did raise your right hand, Mr. Perry. You say your name, I say mine repeatedly. I, Randy Daniel, Randy Perry. Do solemnly swear our firm, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the office, that I will faithfully execute the office and duties of TBCC Board of Trustees, District Seven, duties of TBCC, Board of Trustees, Place Seven, of the State of Texas, of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect and defend, protect and defend, the Constitution and laws of the United States, Constitution of laws of the United States, and of this state, and of this state. So help me God. Constitution of laws of the United States and of this state and of this state, so help me God.
Thank you, Judge. This time we'll consider and discuss ground keeping service bid award.
For before you, you have two bids for the found services that were through the college. His recommendation to the board, this is R and P, not others, for our service provider.
Do you want to have any questions, your thoughts, any discussion? Do you hear a motion, somebody? A motion made by the attorney, except the. Low bid of RF Hunt Brothers. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consider the minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty-five, and June third, twenty twenty-five board meetings. Well, I've had a chance to review these, presented to you earlier this last week. Any additions or changes or corrections? Here and under, we will hear a motion to approve the minutes as stated. As I say, we make a motion about turning second. And motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, here. Consider business, financial investment report from March and April.
All right, we're just, I'm just going to briefly mention from March to April. And make preliminary, the, following up on what Tammy was talking about, we tuition fees. We exceeded our budget as of April by five hundred fifty thousand. We're ahead of last year by one point one million as of April. And if you look at the May numbers, we're already at twelve point four. Pre-COVID, we were somewhere around thirteen million, but it appears to me that we're rapidly moving back up the scale. All of the auxiliary items, housing, food service, bookstore, you know, with the increase in enrollment, we've got increased sales and usage. As y'all, although the property taxes are still good. We've got one more payment to come in June, it'll be. Annual performance funding. And overall, this, we broke the sixty million dollar mark in May. This is, this is a real positive trend as far as I'm concerned, the way the revenue looks. On the next page, there's. Personal spending, two point three four percent edge. I've mentioned most of the increases in the M and O, we've got software, dining services, various things like that. The bottom line there, we're at twenty-one million. Revenue over expense, that drops to eighteen. And they, y'all heard me talk about this, as of this time of the year, we've pretty much gotten most of our revenue. So over the course of the summer, we spend that down, with the exception of that one payment that I mentioned from co-board. And still, we did get paid our FAST payment, I believe it was in June. That's for the fall. So we're hoping sometime this century they do pay us for the spring. So we could scroll on down to the investment report. Your cap reserve is still sitting at thirty-one million. CD rates are still hovering around four percent. The next page. Want to talk a minute about cap preserve. And I highlighted this for you, the, we, the first payment from the Kane Foundation for the Softball Field. We did receive that payment, like most capital projects, we put that money there where it will be spent out of. But even with accounting frozen, out of the cash that we had transferred, we're still right at thirty-one million dollars. Hasn't been moved through that month. The last couple items, the next page would be the March payments over twenty-five thousand. These were all things that kind of gets. And the last page would be the April, over twenty-five thousand, if anybody has any questions. Might need to reduce. Overall, it's, it's very positive. I think this is, this trend is better than what I've seen since I've been here. Of course, I got here in COVID hit, so that's not a big lead, but, but we're doing a lot better.
Does any, any trustees, any comments or questions for you to talk to? Here and under, we have a motion to approve the financial report.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded in the day. The motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Office. Consider and discuss dates for the final fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget workshop, tax rate hearings and adoption of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget approved.
Board, in front of you, you have an outline for the meeting, July twenty-fifth. Monday, August eleventh, Monday, August twenty-sixth. To go through our steps for our budget approval and tax rate approval. We just need for a proof discussion.
Motion made and seconded, and all in favors.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank you. Consider and discuss budget adjustments from contingency.
Of course, at this time of year, we run into some uninspected, some calls, through our backdoor inspection repairs. And also our West Hall AC issues and condensers, drains that we had to install. The completion came in after the new fiscal year. So, and plus, we want to go ahead at this time to move, you know, if you remember at the beginning of the budget, we had. Free budget over two million dollars in contingency. At this time, we'd like to go ahead and move one point five million dollars of that budgeted money into reserves. So we're just asking Board to approve.
Do you have any question? Move your motion.
I'll move.
Just a lady in the second. All in favor? All opposed, like sign, motion carry. Number twelve, consider and discuss faculty contract renewals.
Board before you, you have the faculty contract renewals, just seeking Board approval.
Any discussion on this matter? And her motion to accept. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carry. Consider and discuss administrators' contractors' contract renewal.
Same as the faculty, this time we, like, present these names for renewal or administrative contracts?
Is there any discussion? Do you hear a motion? Seconded by the attorney. We have a motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carry. Consider and discuss audit engagement letter for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
As Lord Apache will find audit engagement from the guy with Morgan, Eddie CPA, for their annual financial audit for the college. For the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, cover their expenses, we just need Board approval.
Is there any discussion on this?
Just that's how you normally use. Yeah, but we've been with them since, I came here in nineteen twenty. And we're year to year, but it's much not years. They, they've done a very good job, helped us a lot with the situation that we had, and they're very good.
Motion made, trustee Morton. A motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Number fifteen, considering discuss the fees for the B A S.
As the Board is aware, we're starting our new Bachelor of Applied Science in Elementary Education this fall. And before the Board, we are requesting a fee to assist us during the. Third and fourth semester, which will be their senior year. As a new program, we do not have full accreditation and certification for the student teaching part and to set for. T C certification exam. As, while we go through the process, which will take at least one cohort, possibly two cohorts, to get that full accreditation. We are going to enter into a partnership that the Board approves. For those students to meet the requirements to set for their certification exam, and this will allow that fee to be paid. Seeking Board approval.
Sorry, it won't open up.
Yep, number four, any question?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Dr. Morrison, how many students do we have already, it looks like, enroll for that program?
Last time they ever said we were over forty, are we still holding that strong at that number?
We have fifty-seven total applications.
Sixty-seven.
Thirty-two are already officially in the program, and we're working on the other, getting to all the paperwork.
Pretty healthy.
I've spoken to a lot of folks in the community about this. Everyone is excited about what this program can do in our district. So, do we have, do we. So that's, that's, that's very good. We, yeah. Seconded by Dr. Beast, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consider and discuss naming rights of profound arts building to the Kevin and Janine Willi Music Education Center.
Just going through the formal process of receiving Board approval for the official naming, Kevin Kevin and Janine Willi Music Education Center.
Any discussion, do you hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Just to make, they'll make a motion, seconded by Dr. Curry. Our motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consider and discuss CD rates.
The Board, being gone out further this month. Asking banks in our district for their current CD rates. And what we're asking for at this time is Southside Bank is one that was pretty strong in proposing. We don't currently have an agreement with them, so we're seeking Board approval, just to establish that depositary agreement for investment purposes.
Do you want to have any comments? Next person.
Just curious, can we give the local banks an opportunity?
We sent a letter to every bank in the district. We received from Prosperity and Simmons Bank and, and Southside, no one else responded.
So how do you select the person?
Well, we don't just have one, we've got Money Mark's, Texas Bank of Trust, CDs at Simmons. We will obviously have some at Southside, but I mean, it's, if you have the highest CD rate, we're looking. But everybody had a chance, we asked, if they don't respond.
Sure, I understand, but I just wanted to know, wasn't sure how we do that, that's great, thank you.
So did we hear a motion to approve the request at Southside Bank?
Seconded.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Discuss may bid awards, request.
If you remember back in May, we asked the Board to give us pre-approval. For the bids that we're expecting to receive on some projects for town and manor for the summer. We're just giving the Board an update on those projects. Welding Automotive came in right with what we had budgeted, the West Hall renovation, we did have to utilize the ten percent contingency home. And Marcus is here for any questions about projects.
Do you want to comment? Here and under, we have a motion to approve.
That was just an update.
All right, we will move on. Consider and discuss Carroll Campus Drainage Bid Award.
Board, before you, are three bids that were submitted that addressed the drainage issue at the Carroll Campus. If anybody's been to the campus, you know, for a number of years, it rains. The old saying was you have to put your water boots on and walk to the administrative door, you set them outside before you go in. This project will help us address that drainage, get it out and away from the building as quickly as possible. So you can see FDC construction was the lowest bid, and we're asking Board approval.
Do you hear any discussion or comments? Here and under, we hear a motion to approve.
Still move.
Seconded by Dr. Curry. There are motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consider and discuss personnel updates.
Board, before you, you have two sections of personnel updates for the seeking Board of Presination, termination, hour renewals, retirements, new hires, reclassification, adjustments, and promotions.
Any comments, discussion? Here and under, we have a motion to approve. All right. Thank you, Dr. Rusty, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries. For the last item, though, giving back some. Assessment forms that we turned in, I guess.
Above the next board meeting, it's the president evaluation and the Board self-valuation. If you want me to email you the PDF version, or you can just fill it out and send it back to me, just give me a call or let me know after the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dr. Charlie?
I made a motion.
Here, seconded on that. Dr. Right, right, so you, all in favor, say aye. Thank y'all.